I think the P's are gonna be better.
I love that gavel. It makes everybody stop talking. And I can say that this is the regular meeting of Geneva School District for Monday, November 11th, 2024. The first item of business is the roll call. Bonnie, would you please?
Larry Cabine.
Here.
Dan Joy.
Here.
Jackie Forbes.
Here.
Willard Hook.
Here.
Molly Ann Sari.
Here.
Stephanie Bolino.
Here.
Welcome to all of you. It's wonderful to see such a well-attended meeting. I see a few familiar faces in there and a few that are new to me, but you're all very welcome. We're pleased to have you with us today, and we're pleased to have a full complement of our board. Welcome back, Paul, after your surgery and everything. Good to see you.
Thank you.
So with that, we go next to the pledge of allegiance. The flag is right back there. And Jackie Forbes, the vice president, will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There is an attendance sheet in the lobby. If you wish to register your attendance, you may sign up. Item two is the approval of minutes. We have the regular session meetings for October 28th. Bonnie, have you received any suggestions or changes?
No.
Does anyone have any at this time? Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Bonnie.
Who was that second?
Willard.
Abstain.
Jackie Forbes.
Aye.
Willard Hook.
Aye.
Abstain.
Molly Ann Sari.
Aye.
Stephanie Bolino.
Aye.
Larry Cabine.
Aye. Okay, we made it. Recognition, awards, presentations, and public hearings. I'm sure that several of you are here for that sort of thing, and we look forward to it. Item number one, Fabian Elementary School. What makes our school special?
As Mrs. Haugen comes up, I'd just like to kind of lay of the land here. We've had the opportunity for several of our schools to come already this year and share a little bit about what makes their school special. We asked Mrs. Haugen to come, and it looks like she brought pretty much all of Fabian Elementary to the meeting tonight. So we're excited to hear from Fabian about what makes their school special. Mrs. Haugen, take it away.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Barrett. If you are a Fabian staff member, would you wave so they can see where you are? Thank you all for coming tonight and to our students and their parents who are joining us. Thank you to the board and district administration for inviting us tonight to talk about what makes Fabian special. On this Veterans Day, we wanted to just take a moment to honor and recognize any of the veterans that might be in our room tonight, and also to let you know that Fabian has an awesome wall of fame right now in our main hallway. So we would welcome any of you to come out and see some of the displays and activities that we have at our school. Our administrative assistant, Jamie Hunter, our librarian, Janine McDonald, and our student council partner together to put together an awesome week of spirit activities and also recognition. So thank you for inviting us today on this Veterans Day. So what makes Fabian special? We have three unique programs. Sorry, I'm a little behind. We have three unique programs at Grange Lane. We have Fabian K through five, we have the Geneva Early Learning Program, and we have our Mid Valley New Pathways program. So we are the home of 350 students and 92 staff members who share this building space on Grange Lane. And in thinking about what makes Fabian special, the word that comes to mind is partnership. So I'd like to call up our students first tonight so that they can share a little bit about the partnership that we share with these three unique programs.
You definitely have to talk into the microphone.
Hello, members of the school board. My name is Emmy York, and I'm a fifth grader at Fabian Elementary School. I'm here with my fellow classmates Connor, Everett, and Michaela. We're here to tell you about what makes Fabian special. First, we participate in a special program we have called Falcon Pals. Falcon Pals is a program where fifth graders, like me, work with students from Mid Valley, which is a program that helps students with special needs. We get to spend time together in a fun and supportive environment where we learn, play, and grow as friends. In Falcon Pals, we do all kinds of activities like games, art projects, and even learning exercises. For example, last week, we played with dominos. It's fun because we get to interact with the kids in New Pathways. We got to play games with Mrs. Bendikus's class and play with trains in Mrs. Brandl's class.
One of the best parts about Falcon Pals is that we get to be role models and friends. By spending time with our Mid Valley friends, we learn to be more patient, kind, and understanding. We also get to see that even though we all have different abilities, we can still work together, have fun, and accomplish goals as a team. Being part of Falcon Pals is something I look forward to every week. I think it's helping me and my classmates become more responsible and caring people. It also shows how much we can learn from each other, no matter our differences. In addition to Falcon Pals, our fifth grade class also participates in another special program called Preschool Buddies. Once a month, we get to spend time with the preschoolers at our school, who are usually around four years old during Preschool Buddies. We help the younger kids with activities like reading, playing, and doing fun crafts. Yay, I'm on camera. Hi, Mom. Love being on mics. In Preschool Buddies, we each get paired up with a preschooler, and it is our job to be a good role model and a big buddy. To them, for example, sometimes we read simple picture books together. We get to help the preschoolers sound out words, look at the pictures, and even make up stories about what we see. It feels really good to know that we're helping them learn to love reading. The best part of Preschool Buddies is that it brings out the best in us. We have to think about how to be responsible and set a good example, which makes us feel more mature and confident. It's also fun to see how exciting the preschoolers get every time we come to visit. We also play games and do crafts and read books. The preschoolers love showing us their creativity, and we get to encourage them all along the way. It's cool to see how much they look up to us, and it makes us feel proud to be leaders. We also learn a lot about patience and how to explain things in a way that makes sense to younger kids. We really learn patient, guys. Lastly, Student Council came up with a fun list of all the other things that make Fabian special. Here are some of the ideas we brainstormed. Amazing teachers, teachers are kind, laid back, and encouraging. Math is taught in a fun and engaging way. Amazing field trips, outdoor ed, of course. Fun Friday and extra recess at each grade level. Unique and fun spirit weeks. Broadcast. We also love our Who Is It Teacher bulletin board. Wendy's coupons for the yummy free chicken nuggets. Being in the same school as our siblings. Great playground. Fun run. Class parties. Big classrooms in small class sizes. Safety patrol, and of course, the fun fair. Thank you for listening to putting programs like Falcon Pals and Preschool Buddies. These programs make a big difference in our school, and I know my classmates and I are grateful for the chance to be leaders and friends to the younger students.
All right.
So these are our student ambassadors tonight. Thank you, Everett, Emmy, Michaela, and Connor. And also, we have Mrs. Henick here. She can give a wave. She's one of our Student Council leaders. And Mrs. Bendikus is here, one of our New Pathways teachers. So great partnership all around. Thank you for so much, and to your parents for bringing you out tonight.
Way to go, guys.
That was awesome.
Thank you.
You can go sit down. Great job.[618.16][618.16](applause) I'd like to invite up Coach Austin. Coach Jake Austin is our PE teacher at Fabian, and he's also the adapted PE teacher for our New Pathways students at Fabian and also at Geneva Middle School South. So turn the mic over to Jake.
You have to talk in the mic so we can hear you on the TV, Mr. Austin.
Sounds good. Like you said, I'm Mr. Austin, Coach Austin, as the kids call me. Last three years, I've had the honor and privilege of being the PE teacher, not only for our Fabian students, but for our Mid Valley students as well, as the adaptive PE teacher. And going along, kind of like these kids, what makes Fabian so special is having that Mid Valley program at our school. We're so lucky to have that. Yes, I teach Mid Valley, the adaptive classes in the morning, but some of their students push in with our Fabian students into PE. So much so, the other day, I was teaching the class, they're all sitting down, and one of the students had their hand up, and I said, "Just wait for questions." And they're like, "No, this is very important. Where is so-and-so from the Mid Valley class?" They weren't there yet. And I said, "You know, it might be a minute." The door opens, the student comes running in, and all the kids just start cheering for him. And it's those little moments that are so special that we have such a... We're so lucky to have that program at our school. As Mrs. Haugen said, so I teach adaptive in the morning, I teach Fabian during the day, and then I go over to South, and I get to teach the same two programs over there. So our students, when they graduate from Fabian, go to South, and then I get to be their PE teacher there. It's great being their PE teacher, but again, it's those relationships with those Fabian students when they're in the hallway. "Hi, so-and-so." The other day, one of the teachers said that one of their students got invited to sit at a lunch table, and I said, "Well, who's there?" Well, there was three Fabian students there. And just how cool those relationships are, that's what I think makes Fabian really special. Going along with partnership, something that Mrs. Haugen wanted to talk to me, or me to talk about, was our partnership, my partnership with the PTO. PTO is always putting on fundraisers, and after my first year, I started brainstorming some ideas, and I came up with the idea of the Fun Run. And all it really is, is I put it in with our fitness unit, but I pumped the kids up for this Fun Run to get funds for the PTO. When we talk about what the PTO does and how it raises money for our school and new recess equipment, but I get the kids really pumped up, and then for different dominations of money, they can earn prizes. And then just a few weeks ago, we had our Fun Run, and we raised almost $7,000 for our PTO, and the kids all came down, ran with their grade level, and it was really awesome. So there's another partnership and another thing that makes Fabian so special. Thanks.
Thank you.[794.13][794.13](applause)
Mrs. McDonald, our library media specialist, is going to talk about our lively library, another place at Fabian that we think is an awesome hub for partnerships. So I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. McDonald. We also have Mrs. Kelly. She's our library assistant. And Merritt Nemchek, the president of the Fabian PTO.
That's right.
You're a prop holder, prop holders?
(inaudible). Okay. I'm very nervous, everybody. Okay, here we go. Good evening.
Good evening.
I am thrilled to have this opportunity to share some of the impactful programs that have resulted from the collaboration and partnership between our PTO executive board, parent community, and myself. These partnerships have truly brought new energy to our school's library and enriched our students' learning experiences. Tonight, I'd like to highlight two programs and the acquisition of our new flexible seating, all of which have made a real difference for our students and school community. The first program, born from the collaboration between Lori Haugen and a previous PTO exec board, is Young Explorers, a program which turns our library into a dynamic, hands-on learning experience environment for one week, three times per school year. Thanks to our PTO support, I have been able to equip our space with various tools and resources like coding kits, Kiva planks, and craft supplies, as well as a variety of high-tech, low-tech, and non-tech items. During the week-long program, I organize workshops where students work collaboratively to complete challenges that require the use of problem-solving skills, perseverance, and a growth mindset. Through literacy, I teach our students, beginning in kindergarten, all about how it is okay to fail until we are successful. During Young Explorers, the library becomes a safe place to do just that. With PTO support for funding supplies and organizing volunteers to help run the workshops alongside me, we've seen students engage with learning in a new and exciting way. The students who do not excel in the classroom, or in music, PE, and art, tend to shine during our Young Explorer sessions. Next, I would like to mention the book character pumpkin contest. This is a fun, creative program where students and families are invited to decorate pumpkins to look like their favorite book characters. The contest is held in October to celebrate the fall season, and it's an engaging way to encourage literacy, creativity, and family involvement. This year, 46 students entered a book character pumpkin. As you can see from the photos, the pumpkins are displayed in the library for all to admire. Once the deadline for entries has passed, the entire student body gets a chance to vote for their favorite pumpkin, along with a panel of judges. After all the votes have been counted, I announce the winners for each grade level over the intercom during morning announcements. The winners receive a new book of their choice from Lori's Book bins. And this program not only brings books to life, but it also highlights the partnership between our school library and parent community. Working together creates a richer, more connected educational environment. Last, I would like to tell you about how the PTO's fundraising efforts during a Read-a-Thon last year played a crucial role in transforming our school library with the addition of flexible seating options. These new seating arrangements have created an inviting and comfortable environment that encourages students to engage more deeply with books during checkout days. With options like comfy couches, soft rockers, and bean bags, students now have the freedom to choose seating that suits their preference and helps them focus. Our new flexible seating has also contributed to a more relaxed and welcoming atmosphere where students feel more at ease exploring books, reading books, and learning at their own pace. Flexible seating supports a positive reading experience and fosters a love for reading across grade levels. The partnerships between our school library, parent community, and the PTO exec boards have been instrumental in bringing our programs to life, creating a vibrant, engaging learning environment for all students. I am grateful for their support and dedication, and look forward to seeing how these collaborative relationships continue to evolve and serve our school. Thank you.[1078.33][1078.33](applause)
One of them is our long hallways. As you know, Fabian was built into a hill, and so, Mrs. Shaper, can you raise your hand or wave your... Mrs. Shaper is our reading specialist, and her reading team works together to create a story walk. And so we currently have a story walk up on our third floor where teachers can bring their students to walk along and read the book and ask questions, and it really brightens up that hallway, and we have some good inferring and great conversations that happen because of that. So we do change out that book a couple times during the year, so we're happy that we have a wall long enough to support a story walk. We do really value the whole child and our partnership with parents when it relates to social-emotional learning. Our school social worker, Kelly Latre, and our psychologist, Jennifer Robinson, they put together a social-emotional learning corner in our parent communication that goes out every other week. So we have a logo that you can see on the left side there, and it cues our parent community to check out some of the language and some of the resources that we have to share, so that we have a great partnership between what we're doing at school and how we're supporting our students, and also what parents can do at home. Our next person who's going to share about our partnership is Merritt Nemchek, our awesome PTO president. So I'm going to turn it over to her.
Hello, and thank you for having me. Thank you, Lori. So much has already been said. I wrote some notes, but they're like in the middle of. But as you can see, I think one of the most special things about Fabian is those partnerships, but that those partnerships foster such a strong community. I mean, we show up. A lot of times, I hear it said that Fabian is a small school, but we house three programs, and if you walked in, you wouldn't feel like they were three separate programs. What you see and what you feel are kids learning in a supportive, inclusive environment. I have a kindergartner, a third grader, a fifth grader. My daughters went through GELP, Geneva Early Learning Program, so I've seen it come full circle. I've heard the excitement from my four-year-old about her fifth-grade buddies, and I've heard the excitement from my now-fifth-grader who gets to be that buddy. So I think as PTO president, in my first year, I, number one, did not want to be the person making all of the decisions. So those partnerships with staff and with parents are key. When we are thinking of hosting a staff appreciation dinner, we're not just thinking of the Fabian K through five staff. We're going to host all of the programs when we think of that dinner, when we make teacher wish lists for the book fair, when we're inviting families to join in all of our events. And partnering with staff for the Fun Run, or Young Explorers, or our recent kind of lean-in with our Community Outreach Committee to really partner with the Student Council so those students are involved in driving those efforts instead of the adults are what make it a stronger community, what continue, where you continue to see staff and parents and students show up, and what make, I think, the kids excited to go learn in an environment that's inclusive and supportive of everyone that walks through those doors. Thank you.
Thank you.[1348.41][1348.41](applause)
To Merritt's point, we are a busy front door. I know Dr. Barrett, and we were discussing this earlier on a tour of the building, but our front door opens and closes 40 times a week. So each of our unique programs has a different arrival and a different dismissal. So not only do we take that seriously from a safety perspective, but that is something else that makes us very special, so. If you know me, you know that I really don't care for the word "boss" much, but I feel really lucky to be able to be part of this group. And one of the things that is really close to my heart is that there is no staff position at our school that is more or less important than another. And we value every single person who is working together to make this a really special place for kids. So I would like to call up Julie Smith. She is our driver for bus three, and she has a few things to say about our partnership.
Hello. You know, I'm Julie Smith, and I am one of the school bus drivers, and I see some of my kids and parents are here. They're so great. I know. They are so great. Well, I don't have as much to report to you as some of the previous presenters, because I think you get the idea. I pick the kids up in the morning, and I take them, in the afternoon, I take them home. But I will tell you, for as long as I've been working at Fabian, it's been four years now, I do think it's a very special school. And I just think it comes from Lori down to her very excellent staff, and they just provide a wonderful atmosphere at the school. And the kids are kind, they are cooperative, and they are respectful, and I think that's very important. So it's just been a wonderful four years for me, and I just find the kids, they're just great. The parents are great. The parents are right here. My previous parents are there. And it's just a wonderful experience for me, so I hope to work a few more years there before I retire. And that, for me, is what makes Fabian very special. Thank you.
Thank you.[1523.41][1523.41](applause)
I think the last thing I just want to say is just thank you to everybody that came tonight from Fabian and Mid Valley, representing our school and the GELP program as well. I see a staff that has great respect for each other. I see a building culture that's thriving in our partnership, and I'm just so excited to see all that is to be. So thank you to the school board and our district administration, again, for letting us come and tell you a little bit about our community. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.[1575.51][1575.51](applause) Thank you very much. I can certainly sense the atmosphere of the school through the participants, the students, the parents, the staff. You're all very inclusive and wonderful, and good job. Well done. And thank you.
Julie, are you driving everyone home now?
Sure.[1600.01][1600.01](laughter)
Perfect.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely. We understand Fabian kiddos have to go to bed, teachers have some lesson plans to do, I'm sure. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.
Gosh, Andy. I was hoping you'd let everybody stay until you honored the school board, but I guess that's not to be.
They'll watch the video.
Okay.
They'll watch the video.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Bye.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Well, next, we have, I'll wait just a second till everybody can...
Mrs. Haugen, I do need you to disconnect.
Well, while you're disconnecting, I will just say that the next item on our agenda is the recognition of two retirees, and that's often done at the end of the year, but in this case, these individuals are retiring now, and we wanted to recognize them.
I'll turn it over to Dr. Law to get us started.
Thank you, Dr. Barrett. So we have two support staff members who, you know, started working for the school district within about three years of each other, and now, almost right around 30 years later, are retiring within a month of each other. So Tracy Pankow from Harrison and Debbie Hansen from Geneva High School are going to be honored, but Debbie couldn't be here tonight, so we're hoping to have her at a future meeting. But we do have Michelle Hirsch, the Harrison principal, and Tracy here tonight to honor Tracy. So Michelle, I'll turn it over to you.
And excuse me, I hope I'm cried out by this point. We've tried to do a slow roll of Tracy leaving, and hopefully, I'm cried out. So here we go. I am truly honored. All righty.
All righty. You couldn't even make two words. Thank you so much.
It's the honor. I am truly honored to be able to recognize Tracy, not only because I have been lucky enough to get four years with her, gosh, I'm so lucky, but because I am just the tip of Tracy's iceberg. So I am speaking for so many people, and I will not be able to do it justice, so bear with me. I'm going to have notes, because I tend to ramble, so. It is impossible to put into words just how much Tracy means to Harrison Street. For over three decades, more than three decades, she has been a constant presence, a guiding light, and the heart of Harrison. It is not every day we get to recognize somebody who has dedicated their life to a community because they just don't make them like they used to.
That's true.
And I am so lucky to be able to do that tonight. Harrison's roots run very, very deep, and Tracy Pankow's roots run so much deeper. Harrison's roots run very, very deep, and Tracy Pankow's roots run so much deeper. It is just that, the 33 years that she spent working in the various roles, but she has grown up at Harrison. She herself went to school here, she raised her own children through Harrison, and she has since then dedicated herself to making the school the warm, welcoming, and efficient place that it is today. And believe me, it is so much more efficient when Tracy is there. We are living in non-efficiency right now.
It's going to be fine.
It's cool.
It's cool, we cool.
Over the course of 33 years, Tracy has worn many hats, from her early days helping in the library, to keeping the lunch count organized, to serving as the building secretary, and ultimately moving into the administrative assistant position for the principal. And I'm sure I'm missing so many things in between, but those are just the Cliff Notes. Tracy has been the constant that has kept everything running smoothly. She has been the go-to person, the one we all turn to for answers, for support, for a good laugh, and for often that much-needed moment of sanity in our very busy days. Tracy has been our calm in the storm, that smiling face when you walk into the office, and that go-to person when you need help with just about anything, whether it be copier, budgeting, proofreading, MacGyver-ing whatever needs fixing. I've walked into my office and Tracy's painting the wall, or framing my family's photos. She is a jack-of-all-trades. And she is just that trusted colleague who can always be relied on. She has been that guiding force for so many of us, providing just not administrative, administrative support, but also that sense of stability, continuity, and caring for both the staff and families alike. And what makes Tracy so special, though, goes beyond those roles that she's played or the tasks she's completed. It's, it's truly her heart that she brings to everything she does, every conversation, every interaction. Her impact extends far beyond the walls of this school. She is a true partner in the lives of our families, a trusted resource, and a source of unwavering support for our entire community. She has even provided warmth and support and guidance to the duck family of Harrison Street. And more so, in the past couple of years, she has given targeted support to a very difficult mother duck, and given some very firm, loving guidance to that mother. And believe me, no one can herd a duck family like Tracy Pankow. As we all know, retirement is not the end, but rather the beginning of a new chapter that I don't want you to be beginning yet, but that I'm excited for you for. And while Harrison will undoubtedly miss your daily presence, we know that the relationships that you've built, and the memories you've created, and the love that you've given, will continue to resonate for years to come at Harrison. I cannot imagine a day when I don't say, "Tracy did that," or "Tracy will know how to fix this." I might be texting you. We wish you the best on your exciting new adventure. May your days be filled with beaches, the beaches of Aruba, bird and squirrel watching, walking the streets of Geneva, watering plants that are not mine, volunteering in the husky hut, I hope. We will always be your home, and we will continue to be a cherished part of your family. On behalf of everyone at Harrison Street, we want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts. You have given so much of yourself to this community, and we are all better for it. Doug, thank you for sharing. We will give her back now. I hope she accompanies you on some camping trips. And as we always say, once a husky, always a husky.
In the interest of efficiency, I'll just interject. It's very clear to me that Tracy is loved, and respected, and appreciated. And I think on behalf of the whole board, I want to say thank you for all your efforts and work. We do appreciate it. Yeah, step right up.
Mr. Baker.
Oh, I just, just real quickly, I want to say that I've been on the board for about six years now, and I've had some meetings that weren't much fun and some meetings that were more fun. This is one of the best. This is why we're here.
Yes, it is. Mr. Baker, Safety and Security Coordinator. I understand that Tracy used to go play on the roof of Harrison Street School. So now that, now that she's retired... Can I go next?
You are next.
I'm next.
What's this you've got to do?
All right, so, I don't usually get to come to the podium, but I get to come to the podium today, because this week is National, or I think it's Illinois, I think it's Illinois School Board Members Day on Friday. So I just want to take a moment to recognize our school board members and thank them for all that they do. So there was this fancy proclamation that the Illinois State, the School Board Association put out, and it has all these fancy words like, "Intrusted with the guardianship and prudent expenditure of tax dollars," and "Set high standards for effective and efficient operations of the district," and "Monitor our performance and compliance with state policy." But I mean, that's, you guys know, Andy, that's, that is all true, and that's all important stuff that they do. But really what they do is, these are good people doing a very, very hard job for free. Remember, good people doing a very, very hard job for free, and doing it for the right reasons, because they care about our community, they care about our district, they want to challenge us to be better, they want to challenge us to grow, and they're helping us do that, and I think we should be very grateful for them. So they're going to have to do what they normally make everyone else do, which is come get a certificate and get their picture taken up front by Mr. Baker. So I'm going to call them up one at a time for their certificates, and then they have to stand here for a picture. Paul, we'll have you go last, if that's okay? All right. And we'll just, I'm going to go in order that way. So Stephanie Bellino, come on up. Willard Hooks. Jackie Forbes. Vice President Jackie Forbes. Vice President Jackie Forbes. Thank you, sir. President Larry Kabine. Dan Choi. Molly Anne Sari. And I'm going to hand this over to Paul Ridlinski. No, this is, this is their recognition. Nobody needs to see me. Seriously, thank you guys for all you do. Thank you very much. And thanks to you guys for being patient. You're up.
So, thank you, Dr. Barrett. Item four is staff members presenting board information about the use of graphic novels to support instruction and learning. Says here you're going to answer questions. This is going to be exciting.
Bring it on. It's been a tough act to follow.
Yeah. So before they get started, I just want to recognize the folks that are here and kind of share why they're here. So we have Mrs. Beckman from, she is the English Chair Department, or English Department Chair at Geneva High School, and we have three of our English IV teachers here with us. We have Heather Peters, we have Andy Cozy, and we have Mr. Longo that are joining us tonight. And last year, if you remember, we brought forward some instructional materials, and some of those were a set of graphic novels. And there were a few questions that I muddled my way through trying to answer, like how they were being used and what way they were benefiting our students. So I thought, who better to come and speak to that tonight than those who are actually using those and implementing in the classroom? So I thank them very much for being here this evening, and yes, for sitting through the initial presentations, and especially that last one with, you know, Mrs. Pankow, that one was tough to get through. So I will turn it over to them.
All right, well, thank you for inviting us here this evening. I'm going to just give you guys a little bit of an overview of what English IV looks like at the high school, and then I'm going to let the actual teachers take it away, because they know what they do best in their classes. So how English IV came to be is that it's actually the companion class to AP Language. So when Geneva High School adopted AP Lang, which very much focuses on rhetoric skills and argument skills, English IV sort of adapted what that looked like to model much of the skills AP Lang students were getting, but in our regular English IV. So to give you an idea of what English looks like at the senior level for our Gen Ed students, they'll take one semester of English IV, and they've got a couple of different genres that they could take. They could take contemporary, mythology, or sci-fi and fantasy. And then the second semester, which will make up their full year of English, is an English elective. And our electives that go towards an English graduation requirement are speech, journalism, or creative writing, or film. And so students have plenty of options that they can choose from. And obviously, we're here to talk about graphic novels, which fits into our English IV curriculum. So the class specifically is designed to prepare students for college, what is going to be the best route and the best skills that's going to prepare them for when they go into sort of those entry-level English classes. So to give you just sort of an overview of what English IV looks like, you'll notice that in the fiction portion of the semester, specifically rhetorical analysis of a graphic novel, graphic novel really is only a two-week unit. So I think when we look at the types of literature that we're incorporating in the class, it can be very easy to just think it's the entire semester, when it's really just a two-week unit that is focused on. So here are just a lot of misconceptions, I think, that come along with graphic novels, that it's really easy to just understand and just have a misconception of what they are, because I think when you think of a graphic novel, you think of a comic book, right? Just sort of some, some fun, sort of light reading. But graphic novels have really evolved over the years, and they're much more rich and complex in what they can offer to students. So we're sort of here to sort of combat these common misconceptions, and that they really are complex, rich texts that not only teach really complex themes and ideas, but can really be a great preparation for students rhetorically to analyze something that's visual, which we know in this world today, a lot of what students do, and what adults do in our daily life, is that we have to analyze visuals. And so all of these skills are prepping them not only to analyze the text portion of what's offered in a graphic novel, but to also take a look at how image can accompany that text, and how that can convey an argument. So this is a lot of like nitty-gritty English jargon, but a lot of this is very applicable to why we do graphic novels. In the past couple of years at Geneva High School, we have very much realigned our PLC process and have taken a lot of time to go through like the 100-plus English Common Core standards that we have, to really then divvy them between what we're doing in classes to make sure that we're covering all of them to the best of our ability. And when we look at graphic novels, they too align with Common Core standards. And so this isn't necessarily just something we're throwing in there because it seems like it's fun to do. All of those standards that we want to cover in an English class, graphic novels still allow us to reach those goals. The critical thinking aspect, which is much of what our teachers are going to talk about what they do in the classroom, students are still learning at a high level when they're analyzing graphic novels. And it's the same thing as if they were to read and accompanying text, graphic novels can still offer that same experience. And it's really that visual literacy skills. Literacy, as I tell my students, goes beyond just reading. You can look at literacy through the lens of a film, through the lens of a graphic. If students are going to pursue a career in marketing or journalism, they need to be able to have a visual literacy. And so it's more applicable in just making them more critical consumers of media, all while still teaching them really good English skills. So I'm going to pass it off to Mr. Cozy, who teaches our contemporary section.
All right, thank you, Corinne. Thanks for inviting us out. As English IV evolves, and as Drew and I are, you know, we're newer to the district and newer to this curriculum, another great thing that we're bringing is some of these newer graphic novels. And the opportunity to teach a contemporary class allows me to bring in a novel I studied when I was getting my masters, which was, They Called Us Enemy by George Takei. George Takei, you may remember from Star Trek. So what we focus in, in They Called Us Enemy, was studying how the story is told in both textual areas as well as graphic form. And one of the main focuses that we look at is character complexity, and we know that character complexity is big when it comes to AP and College Board. That's what requires a text to be of higher level thinking. And the main character, George Takei, talks about his life, his childhood, all the way through his adulthood, of growing up as someone who's living through the American-Japanese internment camps. So it is a heavy topic. As Corinne alluded to earlier, graphic novels focus, can focus on heavy topics. And the students get the opportunity to study a firsthand account of somebody who is living through, not just going through life as someone who lived at Japanese internment camps, but also juggling their Japanese roots, but also remembering the feelings of America, and what childhood was like for them, and how it is like for them as an adult. Students also read, along with this text, in my class, they read poems written by Japanese-Americans that were in the internment camps. So they're able to compare these experiences to George's experiences, and study if the visuals are accurate from both those poems, from those that were at those camps, to George, who is also at those camps, but this is coming from like a childhood perspective. So it allows them to kind of compare what adults were thinking when they were writing these poems versus what George remembers while he was writing his graphic memoir. There's also the study of argument that changes between the text and the visuals. So one of the activities that they get with this is they are given a blank page of the textbook that has all the text erased from it. They just get the titles of the images. And they have to come up with their own text based off of how they're interpreting what the artist is saying in the argument. After they fill in those thought bubbles, they do a little bit, they do a little bit of sharing, then I reveal what actually was said on the page, and they get a chance to compare, were my thoughts, based on my interpretation of those pages, accurate to what the author and artist were trying to say? All right, did I go to the next one? So visual rhetoric. So mainly what they're studying in terms of the visual aspects of it is how color and shading changes the way that the students can interpret what the argument is trying to say from the, from the reader's perspective. So if the artist chooses to change the perspective of like, okay, the artist is like drawing them in their face, that makes us uneasy and anxious, so that's giving us some emotions. We talk about, why do we think the author and the artist chose to include this page in this part of the book? It allows them to study those questions. One of the big things I tell my students to focus on is always ask the "why" question. So why did the author do this? Why did the artist do this? And how do they work together? It's also an exposure to literature options. So graphic novels give students the opportunity to absorb information and literature through a medium that they may, that might be either easier to understand or better fit to their interests. And as colleges, like I said, I studied this text when I was getting my masters in teaching. So I know graphic novels are out there, and they're being used in the higher level of education. That's how I adapted this to my, to our curriculum for our class. It's getting them ready to have those conversations, and it allows them to look at it, not just what the text is saying, but also how are the visuals interacting with the text? How are they... How are they work together? One of the examples of the activity that we do in class is called the Optics poster. Um, OPTICS stands for Overview, Parts, Title, Interrelationships, and Conclusion. It's a five-step process that I tell the students to analyze all visuals, and, uh, it helps them focus on what is the overall argument of the entire composition. So what they do is they take a practice, so they do Vincent van Gogh's A Starry Night, and that's how we kind of initially study the optics poster and kind of what the terms and definitions are. From there, they're giving, uh, they get to choose a random page in the graphic novel, and they apply the lessons that we did from the first initial lesson of OPTICS, O-P-T-I-C-S, and then they apply those to a page. And finally, activity that we do is the Socratic seminar, um, which allows the students to sit in a fishbowl-style discussion, and they are prepared with questions, and, uh, they answer them in a group. I'm kind of, you know, fishbowl style, smaller circle, bigger circle. I'm outside just observing, making sure that the conversation is going smoothly, where they have to prepare answers to questions such as, why is the story most effectively told through a graphic novel format? What objects does Takei use as symbols to express defiance? And how does the graphic novel form help tell the story as the timeline bounces around? Because the timeline is not told in a linear fashion. So it helps with that complexity element, too, of the book, that it's not just early childhood, adulthood. It bounces back and forth. Um, and when they answer these questions, they all have to come prepared with textual evidence to support their reasonings. And with that, pass it on to Mr. Longo.
Thank you, Andy. Um, that was very thorough. Uh, so... No, 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 I will, um, I, yeah, it's, yeah. I will share an anecdote, I think, actually, um, coincidentally, I received an email today, uh, from a student who graduated last year. Um, she's now at college. And she took the time out of her day today, this morning, to send me an email and thanking me for, very specifically, how she felt prepared for her most recent writing assignments in college, um, and how strenuous her professor focused on not only the rhetorical triangle, but, um, active versus passive voice, which is a, uh, major thing that we focus on in a different unit when we talk about conciseness. Um, but that, I thought, was, you know, very valuable. Um, made me feel like we are doing a good job at the high school preparing these students for the next level. Um, and here we are. So that being said, um, I teach the World Mythology class, and our graphic novel is The Odyssey. Um, a lot of the same things that Mr. Cozy mentioned, we do in our class as well. Um, it's just a different genre. Um, and really, one of the things that is very helpful when it comes to, um, mythology, and specifically The Odyssey, did anybody read The Odyssey in school, the actual epic poem? Yeah, um, did you enjoy it? Yeah, yeah, this, yeah, yeah. Um, so we laugh at that, but like, this story has been around for several thousand years. Um, and yet, we force students to read it, and they don't enjoy it. And it is one of those things that, because it wasn't originally written in our language, it wasn't even originally written, um, it can really depend on the translation. And what we have opted to do as a school is provide this in a graphic novel format, um, which, to be really practical about it, this is a semester-long course, right? English IV is only a semester, and to throw in an epic poem in, in a semester long, I mean, there's, there's year-long courses, people study The Odyssey like as majors, basically. So this is an opportunity for us to really get a lot of bang for our buck. Um, the students are exposed to the story, which is almost literally a timeless adventure, hero's journey story, and, uh, provides a really, uh, rich level setting of cultural touchpoints for students that they may not get. That's one of the things that I think a lot of students walk away from the mythology version of this class is, there's a lot of things that you are exposed to as Western civilization citizens that have come from Greek mythology, and they maybe don't realize that. A lot of kids know Percy Jackson and things like that, but they, you know, they don't necessarily realize, oh, these Scylla and Charybdis, those are monsters in this story, that means a rock and a hard place. So it allows us to, to focus on the story and all of the visual rhetoric that Andy talked about in a much more efficient way, rather than going through and reading the entire epic poem. So, uh, the activity examples that we do, um, again, I won't go over the, the Socratic seminar thing in too much detail, because it is very similar, just different questions, it's a different subject matter, different story, um, but all similarly asking about the analysis of the visual rhetoric and how we can tell that story. I mean, there are panels in The Odyssey, pages that have panels without any dialogue or any, any text whatsoever. Um, how do those things effectively tell a story? Why would Gareth Hines choose to have that without any dialogue, right? Um, the uses of color palettes, how does, why does he choose to make Hades, when Odysseus ventures to the underworld, look like it does? As opposed to all of the sunny, bright islands in the Aegean. Um, but the other thing we do is a rhetorical analysis. And this, I, I almost liken to more of like when you're watching a film, and then you write a paper on the film. It's, it's very similar to that, but instead of, you're talking about movie scenes, you're talking about panels in a graphic novel. Um, you're analyzing the usage of color, the placement in these different shots, as it were. Um, what does the dialogue help? Why is it there? Why isn't it there in some cases? Um, and really, all of those things, how do they convey an argument? Why are those decisions made in order to communicate that story and those universal themes that have been a part of The Odyssey for several thousand years? So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Heather Peters. I teach the science fiction and fantasy portion of this. And as the gentlemen have stated, it's kind of been a brainchild that I've been working on for the last eight years, um, working with Corinne and then my predecessor Nancy Rizzo. Um, part of why you've been seeing so many requests for the different novels is this. Because it is a semester-long course, and we wish we could have the kids for a whole year. I, I could teach a whole year on just Dune alone. If anybody has read it, it's been one of my favorite books since I was in high school. It's enormous, and it would be me and like three kids. And I have those three kids. Um, but the truth of the matter is, is that to be able to get through these texts and to expose the kids to the things that are not mainstream, which is part of what science fiction and fantasy does, um, it, we are trying to build just this, this library of things that we can choose from. So for example, for like a semester, like this semester that's short, we have to be able to choose perhaps maybe a shorter novel, or we can maybe then fill in a little bit more with a little longer or more complex, um, graphic novel. It allows us to adapt directly to the students that are sitting in front of us for the needs that we have in this moment, in this time. And so that's why you keep getting so many of these different, um, examples. These are the three that I have right now for science fiction and fantasy. Um, I am most particularly proud of the Kindred edition. Um, I will be piloting with that, um, next semester, uh, because this is such a short semester, to do something new was difficult in this period of time. But again, like "They Called Us Enemy", it allows us to bring some of these hard-hitting topics that, if we don't talk about them, that's where they have their power. And so it, it gives us an opportunity to bring a lot of those things to the table. Just to give you some examples, one of the methodologies that we use in English IV is designed to help students read critically, their, on their own first. And then when they come to class, one of the ways in which we are helping them to retain that information, not just as a level of understanding, but also to be able to synthesize that information, but to do it from here, instead of taking notes. Um, for me, I make them read, uh, the background information. We call this rhetorical situations, so we always give them the background reasons for why a piece came into existence. And in science fiction and fantasy, I make them read the first chapter of Dune, because if they don't, they don't have any idea what's going on. And so they read that, and they understand who Frank Herbert is, and/or was, and why he wrote this novel. And then they take a look at the fact that the graphic novel was written by his son. And they look at that background information, and they look at what Brian Herbert's purpose was. And they take a look at those two authors, and they say, okay, rhetoric is about author purpose. It's about seeing it through why this was created in this time and place, and the audience that it was made for. And so we look at that adaptation, and they have to synthesize, it's like five different pieces of information. They have to hold that in their head, and then this is a quiz. And they don't get to have any of their notes, and they have to be able to come up with this information. Um, from there, we do talk about the graphic novel. This is just one of the portions of the lessons that we do. Um, and it ties into, again, just quickly, closure is about what happens in between the panels. And so we teach them how the graphic novel comes into place and all the elements that go about it. So one of the reasons I like using this particular panel is you get through all of these different things, the story of the boy who promises his mom that he's not gonna drink and drive, and he ends up in the grave there at the end. And then there's a series of panels that I use with them that shrinks the story down to the point where all you get is, no, Mom, I won't drink, straight to the graveyard. And what we do is we take a look at what the emotional impact is when, I mean, there are, think of when you're creating a commercial. How do you choose what the different scenes are gonna be? How do you choose what the angles are gonna be? And we all know that editing can have a really big difference on the meaning of something. And so when somebody has something that's uncut versus something in the way in which you put those sequences together, it can absolutely change that message. And so we take a look at a lot of those things. Um, this is, again, as we look forward, just to give you some of the examples. Um, for each section that we do, then I add in another layer of, hey, let's take a look at another component, and we're gonna specifically direct that to this piece. So the closure is what your brain fills in in between the panels. So what is going on between this panel here and here, and what have you already filled in the blank? Um, one, and again, as I said, I make them compare the two. Uh, this is just another example of a question where they have to take a look and do an act, uh, a rhetorical analysis of this panel. And I let them choose, you can see down at the bottom, what some of the different elements are that go into creating a graphic novel. And so students have a lot of choice here. I know that it can be frustrating when they take quizzes in English, and it's like, what color were the shoes on that guy on page 32? And you're like, I don't know. And so a part of it is helping the kids, um, to be able to be successful in the parts that they remember. And it's not about me holding all the answers. It's about allowing them to, to come up with what their answers are. And some of the most rewarding things come from reading what their answers are in these quizzes, and they're, they're mind-blowing. And then we add that into a conversation. So we get to discuss and digest this as we go on afterwards, we go through. Um, I also teach a section of contemporary, and this is one of the ways in which I transition from teaching 1984 into teaching "They Called Us Enemy". We don't read 1984, the graphic novel, but I have a copy of it. And so one of the last questions that I ask them before we transition out is, here's what it is in the novel as it was written, here's how it's represented as the graphic novel. And you'll notice that the language is exactly the same, it's just how it's represented. And then the kids kind of get that way of, like, how does the visual kind of bring it apart? And so really, we are operating on a level-two critical thinking pretty much all the time. We like to say that if your brain is not leaked out of your ears, we have not done our job. And with that...
Yeah, so I would love to invite all of you to come in and see it in action. I think something that the English department does really well at Geneva is that we have really good teachers, and they teach their lessons really well. Um, and I have all the faith in our English board teachers when we're in that graphic novel unit, that students are truly walking away, um, with an experience that's enriching and preparing them for their college pathway, which most of our students are on that pathway. Um, so we invite you in, feel free to email me, any of them, and we would love to have you in to come observe any of their lessons. So, yeah, if you have any questions, feel...
Does anyone have any questions?
Just like to make a comment, just like to make a comment that, um, when I picked up Kindred and started reading it and looking at some of the images, I thought, gee, how are they gonna process this? So I'm so glad that you came here to, um, bring it to life, so to speak, in terms of how you have these, uh, critical thinking, um, uh, angles to it, if you will, rhetorical and panel analysis. Because I looked at, as I was reading it, I'm thinking like, gee, how are they gonna process this from Geneva? I mean, how are they gonna make sense of that? And, and it is a heavy topic. I mean, it's fantasy, but, you know, as I began to read through it, I was really not, you know, disturbed, but I really had some questions in terms of, how is this gonna work? How are they gonna process this? I'm so glad that you brought this to life for us, to, for all of them. I mean, but that one in particular, because that's a heavy, heavy topic, for sure, yeah.
I was curious, when you do these graphic novel studies, obviously, and I learned about graphic novels, that there are different, the way you read it, the panels, the different shades, and different things like that. Do you study that portion first, like how you read a graphic novel?
Yep, absolutely, yep.
Okay, and then you just point those features out?
Correct.
I just had a comment. I just wanted to say thank you for meeting our students, not for where they're at as far as learning, like graphic novels are easier, but for where they're at in needing to understand literacy in a different way than we've probably experienced when we were in high school. I think that you guys all calling out the aspect of visual literacy is so important, and we need our kids to be learning how to critically think, and that's beyond reading the words on the page, because what they're experiencing every day, and what they were not only experienced in college, but as adults, is how are they gonna intake all this information to then make decisions and be able to carry forward in life? So thank you. I think that that is wonderful, and I think The Odyssey is a wonderful example. That started as an oral story that was told that way, and has now transitioned to this to meet our kids where they're at. So thank you for sharing all of it. I think that that was insightful. I was an English major, and I would be very excited to take any of your classes. But I think a lot of the themes that I learned about, I heard all of you talk about. So we know where they're hitting on those. Thank you.
I do ask every, like, new hire that comes in, because I read a graphic novel back when I was in college. And, I mean, I'm young, but, um, I'm still telling myself that, um...
Just point it out.
Until I can't.
Yeah.
But I have asked every new hire that's come in, and every single new hire has said that they've read a graphic novel in college. So I do think it's a, like, vastly changing college world that we're even approaching as well, and colleges are adapting and being, coming a little bit more modern. And so we're very much changing with the times, and still very much meeting students where they need.
I just have one comment. Um, thank you for taking the time to put together such a thorough presentation. I did read through all of it, um, although I didn't read the one where they had the actual text in the graphic novel. I wanna go back and read that one again, I just don't have time. You really helped illustrate the importance and help make us look at it a little different way by taking the time to put all that together. Because you could've just put, you know, five words and five bullet points, like most people do. But you took the time to really dive into the topic and educate us as board members, so thank you for doing that. Um, it did not go unnoticed. Thanks.
They're such English teachers.
I agree. I think I echo, echo what my colleagues have said here, that, that, and I'll be the first to admit when, when I first found out that Fahrenheit 451 was coming out in a graphic form, graphic novel form, that I kind of questioned that, right? And so to have you explain it in a very thorough way and, um, you know, helped me as a schooler, understand that, hey, this is the, you know, new end. I, I think the, kind of the light bulb, the aha moment for me was with The Odyssey explanation, and remembering reading that and trying to visualize these words that you're reading, the words, you're trying to create a visualization or a picture in your own mind as you're reading this. But to have that already there, so that you can get beyond that and just think about the, the words critically versus, you know, trying to picture, okay, what is, what does this character look like, right, in your own mind? So thank you for putting your presentation against me.
You got anybody down there? I, uh, I also, I guess, in the interest of brevity, I'll say, I agree with what everybody said. Uh, I'm old. I didn't, I, I did not read a graphic novel in college.
It's only a number, Larry, it's only a number.
I was reading James Joyce and Ulysses and things like that, which I found to be heavy, but, but fathomable. Um, I read Fahrenheit 451 when I was in high school on my own. And, uh, so it kind of got me interested. I reread it, and I also read the graphic novel. And I came away with questions which you have, for the most part, answered. The one thing I did notice is that Bradbury's... The one thing I did notice is that Bradbury's use of the language was so expressive in that particular book. And, and the graphic novel certainly tells the story as well, but I can see now that you also emphasize that difference. So, no questions really, except keep up the good work.
I'll just say one more thing, as I date myself as 1981, the video, a video killed the radio star. But I could see that this graphic novel really probably brings back the joy of reading, which I think is a good thing. So, not killing it off. This is good.
I think it also sparks students like...
We've got to have you on TV.
Last thing to that, too, is more and more, we're seeing students not be as interested in reading, which is like an English teacher's worst nightmare. And I think when students do read a graphic novel, I'm not saying it's going to happen for 100% of the students in that classroom, but if a light bulb can go off for students that finds that love and that spark for reading again, I mean, who would want to shut that down? So, if it comes in the form of a graphic novel that just then introduces them back into the world of reading, we're going to help foster that and do whatever we need to so that they can continue doing that for the rest of your lives. Because truly, like, reading is what makes you smarter. And the minute that we stop reading as a society, it's, phew, I could write a whole thesis on it, right? It's very scary. And so, graphic novels can be that spark.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, so much. You could tell what Stephanie said, such English teachers, when Mr. Longo said, you know, active versus passive, and they all looked at each other like, "Yeah." Like, oh, yeah, I'm way into that. Well, thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you again. Item five on this agenda is the proposed 2024 tentative tax year levy. Todd would normally be here, but I know he's occupied at the moment. So, we have second best person at the moment.
I think Todd planned this, so he didn't have to follow all that.
Yeah, you don't want to follow all that. Are you good projecting?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Adrian Ramirez is here, Assistant Director for Business Services. As you said, Mr. Latham's not available to be here. The tentative levy was presented at our last meeting. You recall Todd presented it to the Finance Committee and then to the full board. Tonight is just a brief update from Adrian and then with a few changes that their team has made since the last, since our last meeting. And then, the levy will come back to you at our next meeting in December with, you know, a final request for approval. So, I'll pass it over to Adrian. While he's connecting our mind, everybody, the levy isn't the budget. The levy is our request to, you know, to the local taxing body, basically to the assessor for our revenue to fund our budget. So, take it away, sir.
All right. Well, good, good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight. As Dr. Barrett mentioned, I'll be presenting the 2024 tentative tax levy for this year. This builds upon the draft presentation that Todd presented last month, and many, many of these slides were discussed. So, I'll aim to keep things brief and kind of just point out any update or clarifications to keep us on track. So, here is a list of the tax levy components, which I'll be discussing throughout the presentation. So, what is EAV? Equalized access valuation is the property valuation after the county and state equalization calculations are performed. So, why is EAV important? So, it's important because it's used to calculate the amount of property taxes that a district can collect. It's our foundation to, to our levy. So, here is history, has a chart of the history of the rate setting EAV going back to 2014. As you can see, there has been a big increase this year from the previous year. The percentage is an increase of 13%. And the reason for that is the district has just seen a lot of growth in EAV, and there has been, it's pretty much a result of the property values in a district increase. So, new property and construction, this is a big part of the levy. So, every year, we have new homes, anything that can really be taxable in Geneva. The estimate that we received from the county this year is 11.3 million. So, that's something that's, that the assessor has collected and reviewed and turned into the county. So, just some information on the property tax extension limitation law, also known as PTO. So, PTO is a law in Illinois that limits how much a school district or any local govern, any local government can increase property tax revenue by. So, it's designed to help protect taxpayers by capping the growth of property taxes. Under PTO, the district can only increase property taxes by a maximum of 5% or CPI, whichever is the lesser. So, what is the limitation? So, as I just said, it's either 5% or CPI, whichever one is the smaller percentage. So, here is a chart of the, of CPI dating back to 2013. As you can see, the last couple of years, it was pretty high. It's gone down. The reason it's decreased pretty much just explains that inflation is going down. So, we have funds that are subject to PTO. The, we have our cap funds, and we have our non-cap funds. Our non-cap funds, which are bonds and interest, working cash bonds and revenue recapture, those are our non-cap funds. All the other funds are cap funds. So, calculating the limiting rate, so here's just a formula that shows how to, how we get to that limiting rate. So, prior year extension multiplied by one plus the lesser of 5% or CPI divided by total EAV minus the new property. So, here is a chart of the limiting rate history for the district going back to 2013. As you can see, the rate has gone down. It's the lowest rate it's been since, yeah, in the past 10 years. So, the reason for the rate being that low is due to the increase in EAV. Our bonds and interest payment has gone down and, and because CPI has decreased. So, that has resulted in the lowest rate we've had in, in a long time. So, this is a new slide that was added to this presentation. It shows, it's a comparison between what we requested versus what we actually received. So, what we actually received is referred to the extension. So, as you can see, the numbers are pretty close. And, you know, I've only been with Geneva since July. But I will say that I think it's clear that the district has consistently conducted thorough research based on how close the amounts are. In my experience, I work in other school districts, a lot of them like to just kind of balloon levy, which means they'll ask for more, for a lot of money that they know they won't get. But in here in Geneva, what I've learned from Todd is that he really does his research and really tries his best to get an accurate number of what we were going to receive. So, just to kind of summarize all the numbers I've thrown at you guys, so CPI is 3.4%. The PTO cap is 5%. So, we have to take the lesser of that percentage. So, we're going to be using 3.4% for the levy. Our estimated EAV is 1.9 billion, over nine, over 1.9 billion. That's an increase of over 13.0% from the prior year. New construction is 11.3 million. We're capped at 4.51. Bond and entries, bond and interest to decrease in 2.13, 2.13%, which is just showing that our, our debt is going down because of the payments we've made over time. Our estimated tax receipts, we're estimating that we will receive close, over 104 million in tax revenue, which is an increase of over 3.1 million from the prior year. So, this is a worksheet that we use, that many school districts in Illinois use to calculate the levy. So, this takes into consideration CPI, the previous year's EAV, the estimated EAV, the new property, and this is what we use to calculate the levy. So, there was an update in this worksheet from the previous worksheet that Todd presented. So, the update had to do with, after doing some research and calculating how much money we would need for bond and interest, we were able to see that we can't, we overestimated it a little bit. So, we moved $87,000 from bond and interest to special education. So, that did not change our total levy. It changed our cap tax rate from 4.41% to 4.51%, but it did not result in any change of the levy amount. And the reason we decided to allocate those funds to special education, just because, again, in doing our research and adding our numbers, we've spent close to 10 million, I think, last year in special education. So, we just wanted to make sure we have, we could add extra funds to that, to special So, here is the certificate of levy, just shows the amount being requested from each fund. The certificate will be, will be asked to be approved by the board next month. And that's just the way, that's how it's filled out. So, truth and taxation hearing. So, the truth and taxation hearing is a public meeting where the school district explains the property tax plans and gives taxpayers a chance to speak. The process of a tax, a truth and taxation hearing is they provide the notice in the local newspaper. This allows members to, of the public, to provide testimony, provides the Board of Education an opportunity to hear and provide input. And this also requires the cash reserve balances of all funds to be stated during the levy hearing presentation. So, in compliance with Public Act 102-0895, here are the cash reserve balances as of the end of September. This all, this includes all the, at this point, at the end of September, we've received all our tax revenue that we were, for the previous year. So, what are the next steps? So, the district will announce a public meeting on December 16th where they will discuss the, discuss and propose the tax levy for the upcoming year. During this meeting, the public will have a chance to voice their opinion on the tax levy and, and, and members can hear about the tax levy. So, at that board meeting next month, the, the board will approve three documents, the truth and taxation compliance resolution, which shows that the district has followed the rules for public transparency for setting taxes, the certificate of tax levy, which is the official document that shows how much the district is asking for in property taxes, and the tax levy resolution, which, which is a form, formal resolution that the board signs off to officially approve the amount of taxes to be levied. And I think that's all I, that's all I had for this presentation.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions at this time? We've heard this before, of course. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adrian. Adrian, Adrian. I think I need a graphic novel to help me understand.
Yeah. I hear you. Okay. The next item on our agenda is public comments. Bonnie, did we receive any requests for a public comment?
No.
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak to the board at this time? The next item is legislative updates.
No report tonight.
No report. That's well done. Superintendent's report.
All right. Just a couple of quick things. I know we've had a long meeting, but a good one, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Hold on here. In addition to, let's make sure this is going to project just right. There we go. Just, again, honoring our, our board members for School Board Members Day on Friday. But in addition to that, just a couple of other things. First, just, we've referenced it a few times, but today is Veterans Day and want to honor all those who served. And there are several folks here who did. Larry is in the Air Force, correct? And Willard was in the Navy, correct? So, thank you. Mr. Baker, who, veteran, see? Johnny on the spot.
He got the yes, sir.
Yes, sir. See? He's, he's in it.
He's better here than in...
In the Army. And Mr. Latham, who's not with us tonight, but you know, he's, was in the Air Force and is, does a lot to support veterans in the state. Just so, thank you to all of you for your service and doing great stuff for, for, for our country. Also, I think it's important to reference Veterans Day because today, there were a lot of important educational experiences for kids in Geneva 304. You know, I was with some friends this weekend in another state, and their child didn't have school today. And asked, I asked, "Why don't you have school?" She said, "Well, I don't know, some holiday." And in Geneva, and this is an Illinois thing, right? In Illinois, they say, "Have school on this day and teach the kids about it." And our kids had some really awesome experiences, especially if you go to the middle school events that they have at Middle School North and South, where the kids take the lead on giving a presentation to the whole building, and they have veterans come in. It's, it's really awesome. So, it's cool that our kids have these educational experiences on this day as well. Then, the only other thing I just wanted to reference was, you know, Heartland's Blue Ribbon Honor, some, some of our colleagues from Heartland, I had the opportunity to go with them for the ceremony in Washington, DC on last weekend, and it was pretty cool. If you watch the video, here's the kids at Heartland watching as the award was presented on TV. And then, they saw their principal and teacher come out, and they started cheering a lot more. Pretty, pretty exciting and, and pretty fun. I know that Mrs. Hornberg did the school's announcements from the Washington Monument on Thursday morning, took technology and was able to go make that all work. So, a lot of pretty cool stuff, cool honor and, and really cool for those kids as well. And that's all I have. So, thanks.
Thank you. Board dialogue topics and pending action consideration, policy updates. This is the second reading. Any comments or questions?
Nope. No specific comments. These are all updates based on some of the Title IX updates, and they're just now in line with some of the changes that were made there.
Thank you. Any, any questions? This is the second reading, so a motion to approve.
Same move.
Second.
Aye.
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 Next item is GHS proposal for new and modified courses for 2025-26. Am I going to get hungry if I listen to this? This was presented at the last board meeting. Questions can be addressed to Ms. Sims? Ms. Sims? Or if there are any?
Slur's here, too.
Oh, yes, okay. Any questions or anything like that from anyone? Well, we need a motion to approve in that case.
Same move.
Second.
Aye.
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 Okay. Item eight, work-study topics, future action consideration, the school, county... Okay, item eight, work-study topics, future action consideration, the school calendar draft. That's about it. We don't need to approve that at this time.
Yeah, I think.
Nope, just want to share a few things. The committee has met a couple of times. They will meet again. Really, at this point, the conversation is really kind of centered, not really, kind of, it is centered around our start date. So right now, the committee is kind of tossing around whether we're going to start on the 18th or the 11th. The 11th is more palatable to our colleagues at the high school. It balances out our semesters better. For those who are teaching our dual credit courses, it balances that out more in line with when that, that college semester ends. So they have interest in that 11th date. However, I think for our families and several of our other educators, that 18th is probably more preferred. So we're having conversations about that. So just wanted to share that with the board. We typically bring the calendar around this time of year. I can share that right now, our surrounding districts are split. There are a few of them that are starting on the 11th and a few that are starting on the 18th and one that will not have their calendar available until the first of the new year. So again, just wanted to share that information with you, so.
Quick question in regard to the calendar. I think this past year, we started later because we wanted to make sure that this next year that we didn't start too early. So is this the 11th versus the 18th that we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
So we, we also talked about this at the Facilities Task Force meeting. Because one of the reasons and concerns that we had was getting everything done so the schools would be actually available. And then a good news is, is that in talking with Jeff, he did not see any reason that either date would be restricted because he feels that he will have all of the, and we will have a lot of construction being done during the summer months, a lot of projects being done, but he thinks he can get it all done and we should be on time. So that will not be a concern or issue.
Thank you. Yeah. That would have been probably an issue this year if we started a week earlier. I don't know if Western would have been put back together and ready. We have a lot of Western reps in the audience today, so.
You know.
Can I just add, I think that it's important that we have some consistency for our families because we were for a few years at that earlier date and then we bounced it back to the later date. So I just think that should be a consideration in the conversation because families already start to plan, not just vacations, but what their summers may look like. So considering that, as we're making those decisions as well.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll bring a calendar forward here hopefully in the next month for the December meeting.
Okay. Next item is item nine, informational. One, board meeting, presentation and schedule, policy. Two, suspension report. Three, the tax year 2024 tentative levy memo. These are things that we've actually discussed somewhat in this meeting. No discussions required. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you. My favorite, number 10, the consent agenda. The personnel report, resignations, retirements, leave requests, changes in assignment FTE, new hires. Two, monthly financial report. Three, gifts, grants and requests, $35,541.14. Geneva All Sports Boosters to support GHS athletics. And thank you for that generous contribution. And American Education Week Resolution is here as well. Any questions or discussion about this? Motion to approve?
Same old.
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you. A board member comments and reports. Why don't we start with Paul?
Yeah, well, I've been a little busy, so I don't have too much. But I would like to just say congratulations to the football team for their win last week and good luck for them this coming Friday or Saturday. I don't know what the day is. Saturday. Thank you.
I would like to thank all of our presenters this evening. Really interesting, fascinating, exciting information. Really great to see the camaraderie and partnerships at Fabian, learning a little bit more about the graphic novels. I know just in, in our culture, there's a little hesitation around them. So it's really great to see our educators really doing their due diligence to take that form and make it so meaningful for our students. I think that was really fascinating. A big extension of gratitude to all of our veterans in our community and in our staff at our schools. I got to attend the Geneva Middle School South PTO meeting since our last board meeting. So a big thank you to our PTO members for all they do. And good luck to our teams this weekend. And I think that's it.
Yeah, so nothing more to add to what Paul and Molly mentioned in regard to our athletics and, and the presenters tonight. It was excellent. Looking forward to what makes, what makes our school special and the next feature of, of what our building may be. So looking forward to that. On that, yeah, I don't think that we're going to meet until after the holiday, after Thanksgiving. So hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving. And I think also, our, our big conference is also in between from now till the next time. So those of us that are going to the conference, hopefully you have a great conference.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just, one, I want to say first for policy, we will have some more policies coming up at the next meeting. So I know we've had those on a lot of the past few meetings and it's just by design, kind of how we've split them up as they've been rolling out so that we can break those up into manageable amounts to really dive into them. But I just think overall, what a wonderful meeting and a wonderful day. I think wonderful educational presentations today for us as a board. But also I just walked away with an overwhelming sense of community between everything that we heard from everyone tonight. And then today I was at the Geneva Middle School South Veterans Day presentation. And I think that ranged through in that presentation as well as, like Dr. Barrett said, our students led that. They performed through the orchestra, the choir, the band. And they really recognize members of our community in a way that we don't normally do. So just nice to see how we are doing that as a district. I know one of our strategic plan goals is to work on community engagement and I felt like that came through a lot today. So thank you to everyone for your part in that because I know it doesn't happen by accident.
Oh, yeah. So I was, there are so many things, but I'll just choose a few. So I was listening, as you all were, to bus driver, bus three. And she made a note that the children at Fabian were kind, cooperative and respectful. And that just kind of really touched me in the sense that, maybe not so much because it's Veterans Day, but maybe so Larry could appreciate this and others who served that we take our oath to defend the Constitution. And in a preamble to the Constitution, which I know the seventh and eighth graders have to memorize that. But to hear that these children at this very young age are kind, cooperative and respectful is just what makes a citizen and that we, the people, in order to form a more perfect union. You know, the idea is that they're learning this by example and also they're demonstrating it to the community. So I thought that was really touching in the sense that that's something that's always been important to me. The preamble just, I know we don't say a place to the preamble, but it is important in that. And another thing when I saw that, and Larry would appreciate and others as well, we have a motto, did you learn in basic, that you will not tolerate anyone that would lie, cheat or steal. And that, that's something that we know that, that affects the morale of the, the platoon or whatever the unit they be. And that affects schools too. And so it's important that we have children that have embraced that. And even if they weren't taught that formally, they are being encouraged to do that. So I just wanted to say my 39 cents, so to speak.
Thank you.
Sure. Thanks again to the friends from Fabian, that is my daughter's school. So it was fun to see all the things that they're doing there. And I would like how they've embraced having the three different programs and really have built up that partnership as they described to us tonight. Congratulations to the football game, to the football team. I was at the game last week and it was really exciting. The score didn't really reflect the game itself. It was quite close for most of the game and then we pulled through at the end. So that was fun. Also got to participate in the GEA trivia night, which was a fundraiser for the Beth Shannon Memorial Scholarship. That was a lot of fun.
How do we do?
We were middle of the pack. Middle of the pack.
Again?
Willard had lots of good answers to our. But it was a lot of fun. I'm glad that I get to participate in that this year. And I wanted to do a special shout out to the All Sports Boosters. What a wonderful donation. All that fundraising that they've done, all the money that they just gave to the district. That, that's a lot, that's a lot of hard work on the people who work with the boosters, both on the committee itself and everybody who volunteers their time. You don't realize all the work that goes behind the scenes and that, that's pretty incredible. So thanks to them. That's it.
Thank you. I found this week to be a particularly difficult week. It was nice to be here and see some of the things that we do to make this a better community. I think I can speak for the whole board when I say that's a meaningful thing to each of us. I'm not aware of any notices or announcements, so watch this. We need a motion to adjourn.
Same old.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you all.